Anderson.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I take a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is public comments. It's time and place for any comments for any item other than those on a public hearing. One wish to speak to the council? Hearing none, seeing none. Moving on to item five, consent agenda. Take a motion. Roll call.
Vogel? Yep. Anderson?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is new business. Under new business, action item number one, amendment number four to Polk City Area Two Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Polk City, Iowa. It's time to close regular meeting and open public hearing for the proposed amendment number four to the Polk City Area Two Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Polk City, Iowa. Ask clerk when the notice was published?
October 26, 2018.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Like staff to write a report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is amendment number four. This is U R A number two. Best way to describe that is that area that lies to the north of Bridge Road and to the east of Third Street and does entail part of the Fairway property, Casey property, that type of thing. This amendment that you're looking at tonight sets forth and qualifies certain businesses to receive economic development grants through the city in Urban Renewal Area Two. We are not changing any boundaries with this. It is just indicating that there are certain businesses that we were entertained a development agreement with. There was a consultation meeting with all affected taxi entities on October 8, 2018. There were no comments received. And in addition, there was nobody that came to that consultation meeting. So basically, in a nutshell, this sets out potential development agreements in that area that are in the foreseeable future.
Anybody have any questions?
What does it do to put the undeveloped plan? Okay.
Okay. Take off one, two, one.
Here, Ron.
What can they do that they couldn't do the way it is now if it's designated Urban Renewal Area? What would that enable them to do if they can do the way the ground sits now?
It could do, still do everything that's there. Through this plan, we are indicating that Kimberly Development and Hy-Vee are potential development agreement recipients and could receive economic development assistance through the city, through the state.
Through the city.
Through the city.
Through the city.
Through the city. And that would be by way of tax increment financing.
Similar to previous?
I'm sorry.
Similar to previous to?
Very much so.
It's not a new concept.
It would be for Kimberly, the bike trail. It would be for Hy-Vee, the storm sewer work that needs to be done at the intersection of Third and Bridge.
To do at the intersection?
Storm sewer work at the intersection of Third and Bridge. They wouldn't have to do that otherwise? It's eventually going to have to be done. Either they do it than us.
But this isn't us extending any more beneficial or lax terms that we have in the past?
I'm sorry, not.
Neither of the operating procedures?
What it is doing is identifying these. So in the future, if we do come to terms on these items that could be brought forward and they've already been identified as the U R A plan.
The law changed about four, five years ago to specify that your urban renewal plan must specifically identify types of projects that you're going to have in the area. So this particular amendment, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but it specifically identifies those projects that will be brought forward with Kimberly and with Hy-Vee. So what they're really doing is just conforming your plan to meet the change in the law requires projects to be specifically identified in your plan. So that's why you're not adding any additional area, but you're just specifically identifying the projects.
And I'm good with that. My earlier poorly worded or vague question was just around, it doesn't start a block for any undeveloped plan, a window that they wouldn't have on?
Doesn't change any clocks.
Okay, that's a better way to say it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone present who wish to be heard for or against? Need a motion to close public hearing and reopen the regular meeting? Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Motion carries. Item B, consider, go ahead.
Before we go.
Yep.
Do we still do residential tip? I thought we discontinued residential tip.
This isn't any residential tip.
Okay. Tips have been looked at here commercial. And we're gaining hopefully a bike trail and some other things.
Yes, sir. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-131, determining an area of the city to be a blighted and economic development area, and the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development of a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare. The residents of the city designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting amendment number four to the Polk City Area Two Urban Renewal Plan. Motion. Second. Further discussion, questions?
I wish you had different wording. I don't see that area being blinded, although there are some places in the city that are.
That's the language that's taken from the Iowa code. That's why it's written that way.
And I'm quite familiar with urban renewal, where it was needed, where I'd love.
Roll call, please.
DeBora?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-132, approving the third amendment to the development agreement for Big Creek Technology Campus. Kind of high level. This is just a little bit of a follow-up to, I think, a comment that I made three weeks ago at the last council meeting regarding some work and discussions that are ongoing as far as future development, working both with the North Polk Schools as well as NAP Properties. And through some meetings that we had, it was realized that this amendment needed to be extended. So we worked with NAP Properties to extend this until 2019 in order to allow us to get some work done and hopefully be able to come back with a reasonable plan sometime next calendar year, basically what this is. But it's just an extension to the current agreement that's already in place. Take a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Motion carries. Item three, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-133, approving pay app number five for 2018 Parks Improvement Project in the amount of $26,744.06. Go on.
I didn't talk about it.
Go for it.
This pay application essentially completes the project. Time we submitted, they did not have the punch list signed. I'm just trying to make sure the supplement's done. We're going to be checking it this week. So next pay application should be something.
Oh, are they saying it's, are we saying it's done now? They saying it's done?
They're saying it's done. We need to check the punch list.
Well, there's up at Lost Lake Park. I don't know what we're going to do about that water that sits down over by the sidewalk every time for inches of water sit. You know what I'm talking about?
No, I don't.
Mike, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
I don't know how you're ever going to get passed a seat in there.
Yeah, we need to, I think, a little bit of grading.
Okay.
So I'll make one here real quick. But at a macro level, I think this, since this is the meaningful completion of a lot of work, I want to thank Snyder, thank Mike and his guys. I think we've made a lot of progress this year. And it seems to be, I think there was some confusion on when and what, but I know there were some hiccups. And I know, Mike, you guys up front, and Gary up front of some of that. So I appreciate working through this. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we did gain a lot of useful park land around green space, I should say, around town. And I think that's a big step, especially compared to where we have been. I do think Ron and your input and watching the parks meeting, you know, what's the next step? I think maybe the exercise movement through leading up to last year.
Uh huh.
In a, in a obviously different format is warranted again in terms of, doesn't mean anything's going to happen, you know, but getting their directive on some priorities again. And I would think even, you know, just making sure we have the neighborhoods covered like I think we do. I think that's, we're in a much better spot than before on that. But again, I don't have to say that there's a, you know, a block within X miles of 98% of the homes in town. I didn't get to tell that story.
Well, the Park Commission, as you said, you watched the meeting, but they had some definite ideas. It takes some time to sit down and think about that, prioritize things, knowing that money may or may not.
Right. But I mean, again, you have that list ready and whether it's a five-year thing or a one-year or a hundred thing, execute. But again.
And with the, with the new membership on the commission or some different ideas, I believe you.
Good point.
Motion.
Motion to approve. 2018-133.
Thirty-four. Or thirty-three, sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry. Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Vogel? Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-134, approving payout number one for third bridge signalization project in the amount of $41,702.15. Go on.
This week they'll be completing the roadway portion of the project on the west side. Got some programs inside the east side after this week's. I think we're, probably that's a follow-up item. Mike, Gary and I need to get together on temp signals and decide which way it's looking. It doesn't, east side.
Right.
Put that off.
What, explain that. What do you mean? So the east side is not going, the concrete's not going to be ready?
For the extension of East Bridge Road. It doesn't appear that roadway connection is going to be.
So that just allows any temporary signalization for the whole, for any intersections?
Yeah, I think, well, when we've talked, we've talked in the past that if that east lane came to fruition, it was right old, the DOT wouldn't allow it to until the signal. That's why we had temp signals in there because the permit signals are essential.
Okay. And that's just a weather thing?
There's some other work that needs to be done. Yeah. For the east side, there we have. They've got it.
And they couldn't do that plain without?
It's more than just.
No, I get that, but.
The right turn, our project is a missile project. The roadway portion this week, but the extension. Unless I'm, if you.
I think that's where it gets a miracle in the weather. I don't see that happening. I don't think Kimberly's going to see that happen.
It is what it is. I don't need to know the particulars on what they're doing. I just hope we can get through it.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Need a motion? Roll call.
DeBora?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, Davis Street Reconstruction Project. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-135, per change order number five, in the amount of $1,009.95.
And this change order pertains to two items. The first item, on the south side of the street, I think two houses and there was a low spot in the front yard that existed before the project. Our project didn't make it any worse. There's a new owner in that household and they approached the city of Odun, putting in an intake and stuff, tile and storm sewer systems to bring. And a little over half that change order was to do. The other item with the change order is there's an intake and it was installed a stitch. And we found that there's a couple tiles come from the house. If you didn't know, as they're very designed, even such, we lowered the intake by six inches to pick that.
Questions, motion? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider, excuse me, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-136, approving payout number six, in the amount of $47,958.88.
And this represents the majority of the remaining work on the project. Contractor has continued facade payments, paid him about 75% of the facade, 25% of the facade's established. Then in the spring, park area, we held off on the seating that this year. We're outside the seat day, so we've seen that in the spring. And we do have, if you notice, an application there about, I think, 11 days old. By the time it's all set. Gary and I will have to sit down and have a conversation. Sorry. Now, if you have to take any questions.
Do you have anything to add, Mike? I know we've talked on it a handful of times. Just know if you had anything to add to it.
Ruben, get it done. Don't ever talk about it again.
No, I know. We, you know, there's been challenges. So.
Challenges. It's come together real well.
It did.
We've got a very good product right now, it looks like.
Yep.
Yeah. So it's a good, it's a good project completion.
It was a mother nature. It was not a friend to them this year. So I know that was challenging.
Yeah.
Ron?
Well, I can see, looks like a lot of big improvements there on a vacant lot. I've had questions from the Park Commission and also from citizens, what will that be used for?
Yeah. I think we said that at this point, nothing this next.
We've got to figure that out.
But I think, I think probably nothing this next year based on the seating issue. But I think this kind, that's going to be off. That'd be it. I mean, we're not going to have any, anything on it this year.
Not the spring.
Yeah, just due to the timing on it.
Because all you see there is multiple hydro mulch. There's no seed in that whatsoever. So one can start the spring. So we'll have the seed in the spring and that's going to take a year minimum to get that growing. So.
Too late to seed now.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, consider motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2018-1100, to adopt changes to chapter 162 floodplain management of the city code of ordinance. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Council will recall that back in 2014, we entered into a floodplain management ordinance, working hand in hand with IDNR and FEMA, and actually even adopted a firm flood rate insurance map. In later 2014, we hired Snyder and Associates to do a detailed study in Polk City of any floodways. We did that to make sure that we had a voice at the table when FEMA redid the study. Fast forward to 2016, and a FEMA study was conducted. This was later old, and a new study was done that was completed in late 17 and had a comment period in early 18. That comment period is now done. The firm, new firm maps are going to be the law of the land come February 1 of 2019. To continue to be in the FEMA floodplain program, the city needs to adopt a new floodplain management ordinance. You will see in your packet the new chapter 164, or excuse me, 162, which is the clean version. And there's also a red line version. You also note that the red line version as well as the clean version is more verbal changes. There are no impacts to property known at this time with the FEMA maps, which I think goes to say a lot about Polk City and the way that it decided to position itself with the FEMA studies, with their own more exhaustive floodplain study and review. And so, to that end, we have been able to work with our developers detailing the changes that are going to be coming so that they would not be developing, then later on, have that in a floodplain area. So the impacts here are virtually nothing. However, if we want to continue to allow our citizens to participate in getting flood insurance, we will need to pass this floodplain management ordinance.
Does this, does this have anything to do with boundaries of where the floodplain is, or is it?
Yes.
Is it increasing?
Decreasing. It's changed. Some have increased, some have decreased. So I should say it changed from the 1984 map. It did not change from the study that was done by Snyder.
Well, I'm thinking about along Third Street out here, outside of town going north.
No properties are going to be adversely affected by this.
So they are or aren't eligible for flood insurance?
Everybody's eligible. Everybody's eligible. It doesn't take the eligibility away. What you have in a flood insurance rate map, it's different zones. And certain zones have a higher rate than others. In other words, you live, Ron, probably you could buy flood insurance very, very, very cheap. You, you're down on Third Street, and you happen to have a structure that's in the zone. We have no structures in any of our flood zones. Want to make that clear. There's no structures in any of our flood zones. But if one were to be in there, their rate, if it was the same type of structure as you have, would be a lot more.
If, oh, I'm remembering, we were quite concerned about that area a couple of years ago.
Yes. And the Snyder study did a good job showing where those areas are. The city has worked to protect those areas and to make sure that they were not in harm's way.
Okay. Say that the ordinance and the floodplain have probably an impact more towards future development with development to the north and east on Big Creek, Wolf Creek, where we have future infrastructure, maybe roads crossing those creeks, sanitary lines crossing those creeks. That's where we're probably running into floodplain permitting requirements. We wouldn't, establishing developments, have structures within, within those floodplains. That's essentially what we're doing, is telling people to stay out of these areas. And future reference, you're going to need a floodplain permit to develop those areas along shore.
And not part of this, but I would say the issue that we potentially were going to have a couple of years ago should be going away with the new pump station that's being built as we speak. This one will, this one will take care of that issue. Everything we've been able to help. Anyway, any other questions? Take a motion. Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, consider motion to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 2018-1000, banning stop and no parking. Publishing said ordinance as required by law. Take a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
DeBora?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, reports in particulars, subwork session for next council meeting, November 26th at 5 o'clock. You're on your count. Start reverse a little, we'll start reverse this time. Park Commission, do you have anything? Anything?
Street sweeping will be this week where they're permitting. It looks like Wednesday, Thursday might be a good shot, but they're supposed to be up Wednesday. Just to let you know.
So I can blow my leaves in the street right now?
No.
Sorry. I know, I know you have. I'm just giving you hard time. I'm not blowing my leaves in the street. Let's just be clear about that. I know what you're up against.
What am I need for? Pick up something and give it to me.
Counsel, you got anything? Dave?
Nothing about you.
Always excited to see the square lighting on the extension. Look forward to that. Put you in charge of the weather. Say 55, clear night. Handle that?
Yeah.
Yeah, a little. So I'm serious about that. That's one of the, I think, really big things around town. That's really good. The other thing, do we know from our reading with the armpit engineers, where they're going to start their work on Long Bridge Road?
I think I told you last time. I think they're still saying November, December, when the ground throws up. So I'm just waiting here back from him when that's going to happen.
So whenever we get something, if we could blast that out, just so people are aware.
They won't do it till after December.
Okay. So if we can maybe even proactively get something from them, so there's no.
The way, the way I kind of got it, the way I kind of got it was, it was they were going to get up there at some point in time.
I get that.
When the ground got hard.
I know that I'm asking and saying proactive and that's funny. And then saying there's going to be no confusion on what they're doing is also equally funny. But I just don't want to create any unnecessary explanation on the positive work that I think that they're doing and being misconstrued as something else.
You might, you might get an answer from him. I'll, I'll reach out to him again since he, I talked to him like three weeks ago or something. So I'll give him another shout, see if he's got any update.
Sailor Bill, the slow down.
Yeah, they were a little busy when he shut that last line. Jeff, you have anything? Ron?
Got it.
Ron?
Got it.
Gary?
And then I'll speak.
The light tone ceremony, so.
So we did have a ribbon cutting the other day that, again, I sometimes bring them up, sometimes I don't, but this one was kinda neat on the second. Second we had, I don't remember what day it was. Anyway, we had a ribbon cutting over at the Point over here, but specifically, if nobody's been over to see it, one thing that Boland and his family as well as the, a couple of the other companies that are there, Centers Construction did, is that the new plaza that's out there, they did put a memorial, they did put a plaque out there that's dedicated, they've now named that Plaza, BB Plaza, which are the founders of Pope City, and there's a neat plaque that they actually put at the base of that spire that's out there, so. Didn't get a chance to take a look at it, I thought it was just kinda cool that they actually named that plaza after the founders of Pope City. Get a chance, pop over and take a look at it, and it is neat, it's a neat, neat little gathering area and real good turnout at the, at the ribbon cutting.
Has everybody had a chance to read Roxanna's Curry right up about the corner?
Can't say that I for sure have.
Recently she did, no?
Yeah, there was, there was one they had out.
Yeah, I just read it last week.
It must be the same one they had out there. Okay, so that, yeah, so they were given. Okay, that's all I have. Item eight, closed session under Code of IO, chapter twenty-one, official meetings open to public, section five, closed session, to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion carries, pick five. You guys know who need to be.
Billy's gonna be here.
Okay, Billy's gonna be here in place of you. Hi, Billy. You're gonna come up to this chair?
Yeah, warmed up for it. See ya.